Ms. Clark, roll call, please.
Mr. Schneider.
Here.
Mrs. Matiker.
Here.
Mr. Shi.
Here.
Mrs. Pang.
Here.
Mrs. White.
Here.
Mr. Mohim Patel.
Present.
Mr. Burrell Patel.
Here.
Mr. Rivera.
Here.
Dr. Hada.
Here.
All present.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Opening statement. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Edison Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof posted in the Board of Education administrative offices. Copies of these notices were sent to the Home News Tribune and the Star Ledger on January 4th, 2022, and October 4th, 2022. The public may participate at regular meetings in accordance with the bylaws and the applicable state regulations. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. Thank you for watching. Thank you for watching the recording, however everybody is attending tonight. A little housekeeping. We are here tonight versus being at Edison High School, which was our original plan. We are giving everyone over there a couple more days. Mr. Kalibus and his team are working hard getting that auditorium ready to go. It would have been ready tonight for us to be in there, I'm sure, but it's a little bit better to give it a few more days. The auditorium is beautiful. I was just over there for a volleyball game, and I peeked my head in, and it is just stunning. I can't wait to see the LED boards that are on each side of the stage. And, you know, whatever needs to happen, I think over this weekend, with any luck, we'll even have some air conditioning and, you know, some utility work going on for that auditorium as well. So, no promises, but we'll certainly be there Tuesday, no matter what's going on. So, I look forward to seeing everybody then. And, you know, without further ado, we have some resolutions we need to go through.
Thank you, Mr. Board President. If it's okay with you, can I just make a statement before I go through those?
Sure.
There was some information that got to my attention that was on social media. I don't really participate in those things, so I don't follow it myself, that middle school athletics were canceled for the remainder of the season. I just want to publicly say to everyone, that's not accurate. I don't know where that information came from or how it got out there, but it's not true. So, middle school athletics will continue as they always have, and, you know, obviously if there's an inclement weather day or something like that, they would be postponed or delayed. But in no way are middle school athletics canceled. So, I just want to put that out there before we begin.
Thank you.
Going down to the resolutions, we have under the administrative reports, we have the approval of the emergency virtual instruction plan. We have to have that in place ever since our times of COVID, when we went virtual, in case, you know, God forbid, something happened and we had to pivot and go back to that type of instruction, and we have a plan in place to be ready to go at, you know, the drop of a hat. American Education Week proclamation is on there as well, and that will be choosing November, it's the week of November 14th to November 18th. We also have the Week of Respect, which is every October, and that had already occurred at all of our schools with numerous activities to promote positive interactions with children and successful resolutions of conflict and to reduce any incidents of violence or maladapted behaviors. And each school took part in that and had specific activities. We also have our annual approval of our self-assessments for anti-bullying. It's required by the code. Each school does an assessment of their own processes and their own trainings and their own adherence to the guidelines from the state. Scores range from 70 to 78, which is the highest score you can get. And there's one done for each school on there as well. Under curriculum and instruction, we have an approval of a revised curriculum guide. It's really just basically a name change for one of the classes to go from STEAM to STEAM and digital literacy, my apologies, to make it more inclusive and cover more areas. We have our approval of field trips. I believe, as has become practice, FCCLA is going to do one of their competitions, as well as our cheerleaders from Edison High School, competing in the national competition in Dallas in January. We have our professional development for staff, and it's nice to see, you know, staff getting back out to different places, attending workshops, and refining their expertise in a variety of areas. For a long time, we didn't have anybody going out of district due to the COVID. And our out-of-district placements, you know, that's a fluid document that changes what our students' needs, as well as students that are transitioning in and out of our educational programs. That's all the academic resolutions. Mr. Board President.
Thank you. Dr. Bragan, Ms. Clark, finance resolutions.
Thank you. For finance, we have the approval of the minutes from our September meetings. We have the board secretary report, and included in the finance resolutions, we have our transfer of funds, an RFP for the purchase of solar power, a co-op bid renewal for gasoline and diesel fuel, acceptance of a consolidated modern for the 2021 school year for the audit and corrective action plan for title funds. We also have capital improvement projects, approval for the gymnasiums at Herbert Hoover Middle School, TJ Middle School, and the addition of 30 classrooms at JP Stevens High School. We also have a mileage reimbursement rate increase, but that's in accordance with the FY fiscal year 2023 Appropriations Act. Waiver application for parent transportation contracts. We have a nice acceptance of a donation for new scoreboard for the Edison High School softball field. Technology expenditure for St. Helena School, obsolete items, payment of claims, the investment report, our expenditures for our self-funded medical and prescription costs, the bills list, and finally, the transportation report. And that concludes the finance report.
Thank you very much. I'll throw to my fellow board members, if anybody has any questions on any resolutions, comments, Mr. Patel.
Board President, thank you.
Yeah.
First and foremost, I want to thank the board for working together to get that message out to the zoning board, to get the development side pushed or away from overcrowding our schools. So, working together, I greatly appreciate it. I'm sure you're going to talk about it more. But just a quick question on the anti-racism secondary 6 to 12 Week of Respect. Is this part of our curriculum, or is it coming from the state, the county, the township? Where is exactly this information for this anti-racism bullying coming from? I think it's called the Week of Respect, and it's from the state. The guidance is that we have to put activities in place at each of our grade levels to promote, you know, positive behavioral interactions. Awesome. And the name Edison illuminates, who gets to decide on that name? Does the state decide that name, or does the Board of Ed decide on that name, or how does it work? Give me a little more information on that. Edison illuminates, what are you referring to? For the secondary 6 to 12 Anti-Racism Week of Respect, we have the name as Edison illuminates, and it says anti-racism. So, I just wanted to find out where that name is coming from, because it's very close to what the PR firm is sending out for the township for the PR for Sam Joshi. So, I just want to make sure that it doesn't correlate to the same. Yeah, as far as I know, Mr. Patel, we have no interactions with the township on any of that, and, you know, I don't have it right in front of me. I'll pull it up and take a look at it. But I know we get a lot of that information and a lot of the stuff, including the newsletters, from Hethisha Patel, who's our diversity equity and officer. Perfect. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I just have two questions.
Ms. Matiker.
Can you elaborate on what this waiver thing is, where requiring parent guardians to carry a million combined, single income liability policy? I mean, I know we are applying for a waiver, I just want to know, I've never seen this
Sometimes for transportation, especially for some of our special needs students, it's hard for us to find a vendor that would do it at a reasonable price. So, parents are able to offer that and to have that ability to do that, and the state allows a waiver. You used to have to have a million dollars' worth of coverage and demonstrate that, but we are allowed to have a waiver that you don't have to have that much coverage. So, for instance, we've had parents in the past who drive their child to and from school maybe an hour away, and instead of paying a bus vendor $100,000, whatever they may charge for that, you know, we pay them $5,000, $10,000, and it seems like they enjoy it, they get a little extra money, and we get their child to the school they need to go to.
And my second question is for the solar power purchase agreement. You talk about an evaluation committee. Who was in the evaluation committee?
So, that was our budget planning and oversight committee. We'll provide more details on Tuesday regarding this whole purchase.
Okay. Thank you, Bido.
For clarity as well, for the record, the DCO Energy, who's our contracted ESCO company, they provided us with the solar vendors, and then our budget oversight committee. Under Mr. Patel's chairmanship, we're the ones that vetted that solar company to make an official recommendation to this board.
Thank you.
In regards to that recommendation.
Yes, Mr. Patel.
If the whole board can have privy to that before we make a vote on it next Tuesday, I want to make sure that we all know prior to as to who the company is and what was the criteria and so forth and so forth.
It's in the actual resolution. It gives you the price per kilowatt?
No, but I'm talking about in regards to choosing that company. How did you vet them? What was the criteria that you used in regards to getting this company versus anyone else?
So, the company was recommended by DCO Energy. It was certainly based on the lowest price. So, we reviewed that in one of the committee meetings. It's in the record in the meeting minutes. And then, we asked actually Dr. Bragan to do some research and meet with the DCO again. So, the committee met with DCO last time around, and they explained the whole reason why we should have this company, based on the price and other aspects. So, that was, and the minutes that I will publish, we'll have all the detailed information, and we'll certainly, we can discuss next Tuesday if you want.
And, excuse me, Dr. Bragan?
Just on that too, the entire report, Ms. Patel, is on our website. It goes over the evaluation process, what the scoring rubrics were and what the actual scores were. I'll forward that link to the board members. Get that. Awesome. Thank you.
Only one thing, Dr. Bragan.
Mr. Patel.
Related to this is, it says on, under the item 2, power purchase agreement, the board received and opened six responses. I think we should correct it as DCO provided all this information to the board and recommended this thing, because in the meeting, we were all present.
They did the processing of the RFP.
Right. So, if you can correct the language before next Tuesday?
That's fair.
Okay. Thank you.
So, for clarity, again, DCO vetted the six responses and brought us two companies that were recommended, correct? It was two or three?
That's correct. They brought two companies.
Two. Yeah.
And just one comment I have, I'm very.
Ms. Matiker.
Yeah, I'm just very happy to see the capital improvement project on the agenda for approval next week.
Thank you, Ms. Matiker. Any other comments from the board before we move to public comment?
Board President.
Mr. Shi.
Yeah, just on the expansion plan, do we still have any chance to speak with the architect, or this is it?
Absolutely. So, this, you know, process has gotten to the point where these architects, we have USA Architects, which did Thomas Jefferson and Herbert Hoover, and I believe DMR is doing JP Stevens, Woodrow Wilson, and John Adams.
It's the other way around, Mr. Board President.
Thank you.
Thomas Jefferson, Thomas Jefferson and Herbert Hoover.
I'm doing the best I can.
Thomas Jefferson and Herbert Hoover are by DMR.
Right.
And USA is doing John Adams.
But, and JP Stevens with DMR, right?
Correct.
Yeah. So, now that I've been corrected, the important part is that we got these plans roughed out as per our discussions in the committee, the whole. There is nothing in any of these plans that haven't been discussed in public. They were reviewed. We, on the budget oversight committee, which is Mr. Shi, Mr. Rivera, Mr. Bureau Patel, and myself, saw the JP Stevens plans, and they are now at the point going down to the Department of Education. At that point, when it goes out towards a bid, I think it's the board's responsibility to sit down and weigh in on some specifics. I would expect this group to get together as a whole to discuss, prior to the bid actually going out, some of the nuts and bolts, and as we have said before, the devil's in the details, and I think that it's our responsibility to weigh in before going out to that formal bid process. Does that make sense?
Board President?
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Clarify. So, I actually still have a couple detail questions, because we brought up at the meeting last time. So, when this plan submitted to the, whatever, Department of Education, whatever, for approval, are we still allowed to make some tweaks here and there, or this is much it?
Do we answer? Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you.
I asked the same question, because I wanted to go through everything in detail, but the point is to move the ball down the field and get the documents going.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Yep. That's good. Thank you.
One, like, example of that, just if anybody's curious, is the flooring. We were talking about the flooring in the gymnasium. Like, in my mind, it was a, it's a wood floor, and maybe in the architect's mind, it's a sport court floor, like a vinyl floor of some sort. Like, if you go to Jams, they have that vinyl material, where if you go to Woodrow, it has that beautiful wood floor. So, what is that finished floor going to be? That's something that we need to discuss. It'll be in front of everyone as a whole, and we could discuss and decide, hey, if this costs a little bit extra money, that wouldn't change the actual plan. The floor's going to be there. The floor is the floor. In the plan, it says something like appropriate flooring for a gymnasium. So, it's generic enough to get the approval, but then we go in and actually decide as a board how, you know, refined we want to get with the plans. All right. Cool.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, Ms. Matiker.
So, I see a transportation report here, and what exactly is that? Is it, is this new routes? Is it, you know, changes to the existing routes? It's the item 15?
I'm pulling it up as we speak, but I'm pretty sure those are routes that were still open, and we do have some routes that we had. We were doing per diem kind of filling in, and we didn't have enough of our people to do it, and they weren't approved already as a vendor route for the year. So, that's what these routes are. Is that correct, Ms. Clark, from your understanding?
Yes, those are like results from bids or quoted routes, in which we needed additional assistance from outside vendors.
So, how are we doing in terms of transportation? What's the, you know, how many students still don't have transportation that they've applied for?
Yeah, we still have some, some of, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have, I definitely have a number of students that are subscription routes that are not on buses yet. And the reason is that the buses that would go in their neighborhood typically, if you go by, you know, a house down on, you know, Market Street, and you have room on the bus, and you pick those kids up, they get on the bus, that's easy. All the buses right now that we have are filled to capacity. So, to get those additional subscription routes, we have to get additional routes, and we have to bid those out. We're in the process of doing that now.
Okay. Thank you.
A question about number six, mileage reimbursement. What was the old?
Mr. Patel.
Dr. Bragan, what was the old rate for mileage reimbursement?
Previously, it was 35 cents.
35 cents? Now, it's 47 cents?
47 cents.
What made that increase?
That's actually not determined by us. It comes from the state.
Okay.
It's still significantly lower than the federal rate.
Yes, the federal's like over 50 cents.
Any other comments from the board? Mr. Rivera.
I just want to make one comment. Like, some people don't get recognized for what they do in our, as in public schools. So, I do want to recognize Power Add Electromech Scoreboard, the donation. You know, I truly appreciate it, you know what I mean? You know, from anybody that could come out and donate and do things for our kids, you know, I publicly want to recognize them and say thank you, you know? I truly do appreciate it. I also do want to recognize, you know, October does do a lot of recognition days, so I do want to recognize it was World Teachers Day, it was a custodial day, it was World Coaches Day. There's a lot, it's actually National Principals Month, so there's a lot of things that are going on in October. So, I want to recognize and thank our staff for all the hard work they do for our kids, and I truly do appreciate. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rivera. I'm going to save all of my thank yous for Tuesday night. I don't want to waste them all on Thursday. Anyone else? Any other board member comment?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Patel.
I would like to thank the company that you just mentioned right now for donating as well. Thank you so much. And I want to thank Jeannie for actually fighting this zoning aspect of what's going on with overcrowding, and she's, in her, in her committee, she does the work. She does make a difference, and she's actually talking, and I want to just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Patel.
Board President.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Are we on the board member comments, or we're on the items, on the agenda?
Open floor for the board members, and then we're going to go to public comments after that, and then after that privileged session, and we'll adjourn from there.
Okay.
So, the floor is yours, Mr. Shi.
All right. So, just a couple items I want to bring up. Just want to make sure that I'm on the right, you know, time to talk about this. One is the recent announcement from Mayor Joshi on the conversion of the Clara Barton Library. Three board members' names was mentioned, Board President, Board Vice President, and Mr. Rivera. I don't know anything about it, so, you know, I don't know about the other board members. This is something that the board has some agreement with the township. I was hoping that the detailed agreement is shared with the board, because the last thing you want to find out is from a social media post from, you know, from the township, okay, from Mayor. So, I don't know if anyone wants to bring some details to the public or to the other board members as to what is this conversion is and the details.
Sure. Mr. Shi is asking if anyone is on social media. You might have seen a post from our township. The township is, has decided via the library board, correct, to, due to low usage of the Clara Barton Library, they want to convert that actual physical building into a special needs facility for our special needs, not just students, but the population in our township. It is not a Board of Ed-run facility. It is not a Board of Ed. There's no agreement in place. I think that the press release, I can understand, Mr. Shi, why it would reflect that we somehow had a involvement.
Yeah, because three board members' names.
I understand. I think that the intention, I can't speak for the township. I would think that the intention was because we're president and vice president and our library board representative, Brian Rivera.
Oh, I see. Thank you.
Now, also, the, I should share with this group that Dr. Tuwi, who's our special services lead, certainly had a conversation with the township, and Dr. Bragan facilitated that, and Ms. White can report on this. This was an agenda item at our township liaison committee meeting this week. So, I don't want to speak too much, because Tuesday, you're going to report on this. But Ms. White, what else do you have to add to what I've just said?
Well, I think we're going to.
Just pull the microphone down. Thank you.
I always do that. Forgive me.
I'll wait till Tuesday, if you already have it, so.
Tuesday, we'll have a whole lot more information on this, you know? I, for one, you know, and I know everybody, you know, that's pretty much knows about this, has got to be truly happy about this. This is a wonderful thing for a special needs community, and it's going to be so helpful. It's not going to interfere with the schools itself, but it's going to be an additional for older students, for younger students. It's going to take up such a good thing. And the best thing about the whole thing is that they're not losing the library, per se. There's going to be a satellite library, and it's going to be located on Ambway Avenue, and it's my hope that they're going to do it really close to Herbert Hoover Middle School, so that those children are able to walk to it. I've never been in the Clara Barton Library, but I know it's set back a bit, and it's a little difficult to get to, so if you're a walker, a student, you know, you know how the kids are, exercise is not a big thing, but if it's there for them, they will make use of it. But I have more to tell you on Thursday.
I'm waiting for Tuesday. Sorry.
On Tuesday. Yes.
On Tuesday. I'm sorry.
Sorry, I jumped the gun. Sorry.
Tuesday, I never know what day it is.
So, since we are.
Thank you.
Board President, can I? Okay. So, since we are on this topic about, you know, construction and stuff, and Mr. Mohim brought up this house next to TJ, so, again, this, I hope that's something that you talk together on Tuesday.
Yes.
So, I'll wait for the Tuesday report, so I'm not going to get into the details of that. But the thing is, you know, my understanding is the mayor had a conversation with the board and decided, you know, it's up time that he wants to help the board and give that property to us, or somehow, and now all of a sudden, we see it's different. So, I hope that, I'm going to hear more details on Tuesday on that one. Okay?
You can. I mean, if you don't mind, if I could just interject a little bit?
Yeah, if you want. Yeah.
So, we, over the weekend, I saw that, there was a legal ad in the paper on Friday, okay? For those people out there that comb through the legal ads, it was Friday, and it was in fine print, and it said, listen, eight-unit apartment building is going to be built contiguous, adjacent to the Thomas Jefferson property. Okay? Now, I called, this was on Friday. Saturday morning, I called Chivvy, and I said, I'm working all day, but we got to do something about it. So, she sent an email to the board, and we got the board majority to agree that we should support a letter to be written by me, weighing in on our concerns as it relates to the TJ property. Okay? Why? Now, we can't just snap our fingers and every time there's something developed in Edison, weigh in on it. That's not allowed by this board. There was a Supreme Court ruling saying that we can't really do that. But what we can do is weigh in when it's actually contiguous and adjacent to something that we own, right? So, if anyone drives Division Street in the morning or in the afternoon by TJ, that's right by our public library, it's a mess with traffic. One, one thing people talk about is the overcrowding. Obviously, nobody wants overcrowding in our district. However, this is truly a safety and traffic concern, okay? So, this is right next to a property where all of our children are leaving the school, you know, they're kids. They run in front of traffic when they're, nobody's looking. It's, I mean, as much as we have a crosswalk, and we have crossing guards who all work very hard, we have a security officer that comes out and really helps directing traffic, this is really, in my opinion, personal opinion, and it's, it seems to be the majority opinion of this board, that it's not a great place to build a big apartment building right next to our property. So, the letter has been signed, it's being sent tomorrow, because the zoning board application, which everybody has a right to put in an application, and we have a right to write a letter saying we oppose it. Well, that hearing of that application is Tuesday night, and it's the same night as our board meeting. So, me, whether I want to say I'm board president, or I'm just working in my, you know, my personal capacity, I can't show up there, because I'm going to be with everyone here, so that letter is important. And I'm proud to say that this board seems to agree. We had a majority of people in writing concur with that. So, yes, Ms. White.
Okay. We did discuss that at length at the liaison meeting, too. I'm not going to have anything good to report to you guys.
That's okay.
But, but we did discuss this at length, and, you know, and, you know, actually, we discussed it with the master plan coordinator, you know, and, you know, we explained this to him. We told him we're not interfering with the zoning board in any way, shape, or form, but we just wanted them to really review that application, because it, you know, it would be, not be a good thing for our schools. The address there is 401 Division Street. If you ever go through there, you'll be able to see. It is not a good thing. You know, I found out, somebody, you know, another board member sent me the thing, that's how I found out about it, you know? It was very upsetting to me, because I only, I always kind of keep an eye on that piece of property there, you know, because, you know, we have been working on trying to make things happen there for, you know, a couple of years already, right? At least two, maybe three.[1701.00] And so, you know, that's why we kind of always watch that. So, but I was very proud that the board was so united and agreed that they should at least review that, that application with extra care. And we, you know, we basically all agreed on that, so that made me very proud. We were very unified on that, which is a good thing, you know. So, you know, I was happy about that. But while I have this, Douglas, I wanted to back up a little bit.
Sure.
On the, I do that, you know, every now and then. On the faces for, you know, moving things forward with the different buildings and, you know, doing all that good stuff, you said we're going to have an opportunity to tweak all that when the time comes. And I'm so happy it's moving forward, you know, it's, it's just, you know, a great thing. Would that be done at like a committee of the whole, you know, where we would, you know, because the public has access to that meeting and all the board members, you know, will be there, you know. So, you know, I was just thinking, would that be a good topic for the committee of the whole?
Absolutely. So, what happened, our last meeting with our budget oversight committee, we talked about financing. So, we have a handful of projects that we're doing. And, you know, we have a capital reserve, we have an allocation of capital expenditures in our typical annual budget. But we also have the ability to borrow money because this board has done a good job of not being in debt. So, with all of that said, you know, part of the, kind of behind the scenes, making the sausage behind the scenes is, you know, let's figure out the money, let's figure out the paperwork and the documents and make sure that everything gets where it needs to go. And then we reconvene. And I do agree with you that the committee of the whole is the right place to go over everything, maybe at that point, bring the architects in, talk to them specifically about the project before they go out to bid for everything. I think I hear you loud and clear that we shouldn't slow the process down, which we haven't done. So, just because we haven't had the committee of the whole meetings, some of this stuff is kind of like, you know, I don't want to say boring, but it's the stuff that we don't have to all get together to throw, you know, put an application together and have the architects who we've all agreed to hire. They're the ones that handle all of these documents and these, this application process. So, so far, it's been moving along very swiftly. We had, it seems, a very consensus agreement within our budget meeting the other day about money and all of that will be discussed. I would imagine Mr. Bureau Patel will talk about that in his committee report on Tuesday. We're spoiling lots of good news. And, you know, I look forward to it. So, to your point, yes, committee of the whole, yes, we're moving along. And in my opinion, we're moving as fast as we can when we have all these other things to worry about. So, Mr. Shi, thank you.
Sorry. So, I just want to mention a couple of things. One is yesterday, Mrs. Penn and I went to the concert at J.P. Stevens, Voices from the Holocaust. Great concert. Thanks to Dr. Verdi and Justin Lee for putting together, collaborated with this college and museum. The highlight of this is some of the violins, the instrument that they played came from the Holocaust. And the speaker, Tova Friedman, which, you know, Mrs. Penn, you know, introduces and started the whole concert yesterday, she was a Holocaust survivor. She was sent to the, you know, chamber, but somehow magically, she survived. And they sent all the kid, her back. And the exhibition, exhibition in the hallway is about this child opera during that horrible time. And the sad story is, a lot of the kids, 150 of the kids, were sent to Auschwitz after that. You know, so, let's not forget this dark history, you know, in the, in the, you know, the dark history. And this, Tova Freeman actually is, wrote a book called A Daughter of Auschwitz. And that book has been in the top five bestsellers in the past five weeks. So, I'm, you know, for people who wants to hear her story, hear her voices, you can go and buy that book. Last one. The other thing is, last weekend, several board members attended the J.P. Stevens home show for the marching band. It was the first Sunday, the first Sunday on the, first weekend on October. So, that's Andy DiNicolò's last home show. And for the folks who has been in the district know that Andy has been instrumental to the program, 50 years in the district. I got to know Andy since my son, you know, started, you know, the band program many, many years ago. Been a band parent for seven years. And I saw him day and night, how he dedicated to the program. You know, a lot of people know Andy, I just want to put a plug in here. He's not only builds these great musicians that, you know, from J.P., but he also builds these kids, tell them to be good citizens. This is very, very important and I see him. You know, the kids, once they leave the program, they just, they just love him. But Andy's not easy to get along, he's a tough teacher, but the kids loves him. So, I just want to take this opportunity, wish Andy the happy retirement. You know, I hope to see him around, okay? Now, I have to ask Dr. Bragan a couple of questions I can't let him get away with without asking that question. So, two questions. One is, we have a lot of bus issues and we talked about putting GPSs on our own routes. Now, we have 30 buses, we have 60 or maybe 80 routes that's out there. So, where is that GPS on the buses? And also, I sent you a case for a student, a friend of mine who rented a house to someone and they tried to sell the house and the tenant moved out. But my friend still sees a kid at the same bus stop. Now, the mom is picking up the kid and dropping off the kid with a car. So, that goes to the question of resident verification. We talked about it throughout the year, so where we are on the residency verification. And I also sent an email to Dr. Hudek about possibly putting a policy for our district that we have to do annual verification. I hope that next time, when they have a policy meeting, they can discuss it. So, two questions, GPS and residency verification, thank you.
Only two, Mr. Shi?
Yes.
Are they okay?
No, no, that's it, that's it. This is an easy day.
Currently, we have 62 buses that are in operation and they all have, the transponders have been installed. They were installed on the buses as of middle of September, about, it took a little while to get them installed. And the problem is that many of our routes are done by outside vendors and in our bid process, we didn't make that a requirement, but we will moving forward, so we'll have that opportunity. And I was in conversations with Mr. Benedict, who kind of coordinated, coordinates our data management and some of this, this stuff with the transponders and our buses. He assured me that the parents that are on those buses that have those routes were provided through the parent portal, the link to download the app.
Okay.
And that if they use that app, they will automatically, if their email was used as the parent of that child, they'll be able to populate the bus that the kids were on and find out where that bus is.
Okay.
So, if there's any questions or concerns with that, contact transportation first, but if that's not resolved, please direct people to call me. Should be working, we'll see how the operation works out.
So, 63 routes, at least?
62.
62, okay.
62 buses, it could be significantly more routes than that because many of the bu-
62 buses, okay.
Yeah, many of the buses do more than one route.
Yeah, double, okay.
Sometimes triple, but not always.
Okay. So, you know, parents, if you're using that application, we want to see, you know, I hope that that will alleviate some of the issues with the weight and, you know, pickup and stuff like that. So, okay, it's good, good to know.
Regarding the electronic verification, we did, you know, it took us a little while to get that information from the township, but we did get it and we did get in the appropriate file. I think it's a CSV file is what they call it.
Yes.
And that's taking place. And what's doing, what's going on right now is our attendance investigators, we had to wait till the beginning of the year because they helped with some of the enrollment and things in the beginning. They're investigating all the anomalies. So, I asked, what was that number, what was it about? It's a little less than 100 and we've already had some students who we found that don't live in the district and have been removed from our rolls. So, it's already been fruitful. I don't know about that specific address, but we'll look into that.
Okay. So, we're going to have a full residence verification for everybody, you know, or this is just still the old, old way of detective work and then-
Well, they did the comparison to the listings that we had from the township, yeah, that we got the file in the appropriate format. So, they did that and when they cross, I don't know what they do, cross compared it, whatever it was, it came up with about 100 anomalies.
Okay.
Of those 100, they're currently investigating. And I'll get the exact numbers, but they did say there were several students who we determined weren't living in the district and have been removed from roles already.
Okay. Well, actually, I missed, I missed one question.
I knew it, I knew it.
Third question. So, actually, this is questions, actually, the, someone asked me, because I wasn't here last month, so I passed on to Mrs. Penn. This is about the AB schedule in the middle school. And when we talked about it, we were saying that we're looking into making a marking period, every, different marking period. Now, it's every semester. So, the parent actually asked me, the question is, you know, is it possible that we can go back to the marking period? And then Mrs. Penn asked a question, we got a very simple answer of no. So, this parent is saying that, is it possible that superintendent can elaborate a little bit as to what are the issues about changing from per semester to per, up to per marking period?
You know, the issues, as I remember distinctly when we went over this and we reviewed it with our administrative team at the middle school was, it really was some of the other areas related to, not necessarily music, which was where some people had concerns, but more of the foreign language.
Spanish, yeah.
And it wasn't just Spanish, I think it was French as well and-
Yeah, this, this parent, the kid is Spanish, yeah.
Yeah, and the teachers had, were seeing a great number of kids over two days and we didn't feel it was an effective way to give the instructions. So, when they did the overall change, some of the things they did suggest was, you know, if we made it in a marking period, it would be more instructionally efficient where the kids would have that period for a marking period, same teacher, you know, every day and go over it. And, you know, the downside to that is that you don't have it for the entire year and we knew that would be, you know, a downside. And some of the things that the principals have worked on is for, for the arts. If somebody wants to participate either in the visual arts, performing arts, they're going to try to provide opportunities for them to do that throughout the school year, not in the dedicated classes, we said. And I know music was an area where people concentrated a lot on because of what we mentioned and just tonight with Mr. DiNicolò and on the other side of town, too, how great our music programs are. So, we're going to continue to do that. Nothing's off the table, we won't revisit, we'll continue to look at it. One of the things also was the shortage of teachers, foreign language teachers, and the shortage of classrooms. So, hopefully, as we move forward with our overcrowding plans, those will mitigate themselves. The teaching shortage hopefully will go away at some time in the not-too-distant future and teachers will be more readily available. And maybe we can go back to the way we had it before, go back to a different iteration that covers all those needs.
Okay. This is the last question, the board attorney, if it's not, no, that's it. That's the last question. So, board attorney, if this is inappropriate, just tell me to stop. So, some of the residents here is concerned about Dr. Bragan leaving the district. And we appointed a new BA a couple of months ago. Dr. Bragan is doing both a BA job and a superintendent. So, the question is, when is the BA coming on board? It'll be another, it will be a transition period for the new BA to get to know the district before, you know, Dr. Bragan leaves the district. Is that a appropriate question?
So, Jonathan Toth, our new BA, is starting on Monday.
Okay, that's good.
And we had talked last month, I wasn't sure if it was in, nah, somebody talked at some point, should we have him here Tuesday night with us as board secretary at Edison High School? And I don't know if the collective agreement was, no, it's the second day on the job.
Of course.
Ms. Cluck's doing an excellent job for us as board secretary. I would expect to see Mr. Toth on the dais with us in November.
Okay, so there will be some transition period, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. That's it, I'm sorry.
Dr. Haydock.
Sorry, Kevin.
No worries, no worries. It actually came at good time. Mr. Shi, just to respond to your question at the last meeting, we did have a policy meeting, we meet monthly. We do have notes, those notes will be hopefully on the next agenda.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, yep. So, we met one week ago, last Thursday. Your topic did come up, those notes are all intact. We discussed policy 5111 also, which is the policy that we follow to see how students should be attending our schools. So, we've, we talked about that, we talked about how to verify that these students do belong in our school district and we're bringing some notes back to the full board so that we can make a decision as a group.
That's fair. I'm sorry to jump the gun on this one and the other one, okay?
You had another question and the threshold, too, is part of those, those meeting notes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bureau Patel.
Yes, thank you, board president. So, seconding to what Jerry said about music, J.P. Stevens Band Festival, that was amazing. So, Jerry, Jenny, myself, Shavi, Shannon, and Dr. Haydock, we all attended, it was, it was great. You know, it was very cold, raining, it was difficult to stand there, but what gave us courage is Mr. DiNicolò spending so much time on the field passionately and all the students, you know, performing. So, we forgot about the cold and everything. Both myself and Shannon got very small trophies to distribute, right? And we were a little disappointed about that part, we should have gotten the larger trophies to distribute, but that's okay. It is still okay, we still got the trophies to distribute to students. So, that was good, but, you know, and really, like, what Mr. DiNicolò has did for the district is amazing, I mean, second to none. And congratulations on his retirement and very good job done and a big thanks to him for everything that he did. And thank you to all Edison High School students who kept winning like seven or eight times or nine times, something like that. So, they were one of the best performers that night, so congratulations to all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Patel. Any other board member comment before we turn it to the public? Ms. Peng.
Yeah, I just want to say that I was lucky enough to attend the Voices from the Holocaust yesterday. It was very informative and very touching and I just want to say thank you to Dr. Verdi and Mr. Lee, Justin Lee, and all the staff and parents helping out to bring this wonderful event to us. Really appreciate it, it was very exciting to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peng. Edison High School, actually, their marching band went to Delaware last weekend, competed in what's, I guess, called the regionals and they did very well. They came in seventh, which is a great, great achievement in that class with the, with the marching band. So, they're headed to nationals and they've been working hard as well. So, just wanted to recognize them and Mr. DiNicolò, so, thank you.
That's very close, yeah.
I always have to emphasize the, the last syllable. So, all right, very good. Public comment, so let's move towards that. What I will pull up here is our, our little- "All speakers are requested to express themselves in a civil manner with due respect for the dignity and privacy of others whose legal rights may be affected. Please note, while it is not the board's intention to stifle comment on matters of legitimate concern to the school community, the public should be aware that if their statements violate the rights of others, under the law governing defamation or invasion of privacy, they may face personal liability to the injured party. If speakers are uncertain of their legal ramifications of their comments, the board urges them to seek guidance beforehand from their own legal advisor." It is a six-minute period, so would anybody like to volunteer to lead us off? Ms. Conway? Okay.
Elizabeth Conway, 20 Netherwood Circle.
Do we have a timer somewhere? Where do we, oh, there it is, thank you.
The first thing I would like to say to Dr. Bragan regarding the middle school athletics, on the media, whatever you want to call it, I had seen that it was a busing issue, that there would be no busing for the middle school athletics. And the people, the parents were in uproar over that, the fact that there would be no buses and that they were fearing that because of the no buses, there would be no athletics. So, I just wanted to give you my version of what I had seen. Regarding the Clara Barton Library, I love that library. It's off to the side, I used to go there on a regular basis when I needed to work with students because they gave you the privacy, the people that worked there were phenomenal. So, I'm hoping that that kind of atmosphere would be perfect for what the town wants to do with that, that particular building, it was wonderful. Regarding the Edison High School auditorium, I got to see it tonight because my notice had it, that the meeting was at the high school. So, luckily, when I went in and went to open the door, I saw that the meeting wasn't there, so then I came here.
Was it nice?
It was gorgeous and it was so nice and bright.
Good.
So, it should be interesting. There was still a lot of boxes and stuff up on the, well, you know, up on the thing. Thank you. So, I'm looking forward to that. When it comes to the zoning board, I've been to many a zoning board meeting and they don't really take seriously the idea of overcrowding. But they do take into consideration what people within like 200 feet think. So, what I'm wondering is our property within the 200-
It's adjacent, contiguous, touching.
So, did you get an official notice to come to the meeting and voice your opposition at the meeting?
That's a great question.
They should have done that. And even though there is a board meeting, you should have gotten an official, anyone within that number of feet. So, maybe if you guys can't go, may, maybe there's somebody- So maybe if you guys can't go, may, maybe there's somebody that could represent the Edison Board, gee, I wonder if he thinks I'm looking at him.
He's busy eating peanuts.
Can, can go and represent the Board of Education with the numerous excuses as to why this would not be a good idea. What do you think?
I think it's good.
Okay. So that would be the best thing to do regarding that property. And as far as the, I knew it would get a laugh, but he's always very accommodating when I ask him something, so it would be very wonderful. Oh, by the way, Woodrow Wilson's planters look fabulous. And I'm very concerned, we keep talking every month about committee of the whole meetings, and I feel like they're, they're being ghosted to let us know what's going on, and even if it is boring, then shame on the people that think it's boring. Nothing should be boring when it's talking about the progress of our schools. And the last, but not least, I know we are losing Dr. Breagan, and I don't know what his official closing date is, but when will the board be able to officially post looking for a new superintendent? Because the last thing we want to do is wait another two years for another superintendent. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Conway.
Board President.
Yes, Mr. Shi.
Mrs. Conway, Conway just brought up some, something. The letter we're going to send to the township, can we get a copy of that?
Yes.
If, if it comes from the board, can we just get a copy before I send it out?
Yeah. We'll send it to you right now.
Thank you. Get to the whole board, if you don't mind.
We could all sign on to it, so we have the voice telling them that there's, there's a strong opposition. All nine of us are ready to sign.
You want all of us to sign it, or you want to?
I, it's, it's clear, you'll read it, and I think it's very clear that it comes from all of us.
Okay, all right.
Ms. Campione.
Susan Campione, H. for Court. I didn't know that Mr. DiNicolò was retiring. I'm not sure of the date, but I want to wish him well. I was a band parent for four years.
The end of the year.
Oh, the, of, this year.
But that was his last home show.
Okay. All right. So he'll be around until June.
Oh, yes.
But I was a band parent and marching band and accompanied many of those trips, and was always fascinated by how those kids learned all those steps, but, so I want to wish him well. And just one more time, for Boskov's, they're $5. I reposted on all the Edison websites today, so you can get in touch with me at Woodrow if you'd like it, and the sale is next week, October 19th, and you get 25% off for $5. Thank you.
Quick question, is there an expiration date on that sale?
So it's only October 19th, it's one night that they do Friends and Family, and you bring the pass and get the percentage off.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. And, well, the money goes to scholarships for both high schools.
Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Public comment.
Motion.
Mr. Patel motion, Mr. Patel second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ms. Cluck, we have a resolution to approve, to adjourn to a privileged session. We do intend on adjourning from the privileged session. No action to be taken tonight, Ms. Conway? We'll talk. We'll get Dr. Breagan to answer. Ms. Cluck.
Whereas, Section 8 of the Open Publics Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law, 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas this public body is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Edison, County of Middlesex, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from discussion of and action upon the here and after specified subject matters, attorney-client privilege discussion regarding student matters, health insurance contract dispute, litigation brought by former employees and students, ETEA grievances, perk unfair labor practices, and personnel matters. It is anticipated at this time that the above stated subject matters shall be made public at such time as the need for non-disclosure no longer exists. This resolution shall take effect immediately.
Motion to adjourn to a privileged session. Mr. Patel motion, second.
Second.
Kevin, all in favor?
Aye.